So 1:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order. All right, this regular session of the North Saniam School District's Board of Directors is called to order at 6:01. It's an open meeting of the board and the public is allowed to observe in person and via livestream on YouTube. On the agenda is a place for public comment. Those attending in person that wish to, to wish to address the board during this time must complete an intent to submit public comment form available near the room entrance prior to this point in the agenda. Those attending virtually must have registered online prior to 12:00 PM in order to receive the Zoom meeting link. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs. However, the law prohibits the board from hearing complaints regarding any personally identifiable district staff member. The board asks anyone wishing to communicate a complaint of this nature to follow the proper administrative process in Board Policy KL Public Complaints. This information is available near the room entrance and on the district website. All members are present with the exception of Mackenzie Strawn with prior notice. All right, so it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will note that a change to the agenda after posting on November 10th included adding item 17.2, which are the November 2023 enrollment totals. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Moved in second at any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, student business, Mr. Perez, Mr. Joyce, who's going first today? All righty.
You just go to the first slide? Yep. Okay, so I'm going to be just taking care of what leadership has been doing and what we've been doing for the rest of the school. So first off, kind of what we've done since last time is we went to a, to OAC in Seaside, which like I said last time is a huge leadership opportunity, a huge leadership event. Where a lot of the freshmen in our leadership class and as well as our executive committee was able to go, go into breakout sessions, go into rooms and learn, learn things that other schools are doing. We had, there was a huge variety of schools from, you know, six A schools with 2,000 students to two A schools with a graduating class of 15. So it was a big eye-opening event that I think we all really enjoyed and we all tried to take as much from as we could. We also collaborated with Cascade for this year's pumpkin carving. It was kind of hard to put on the event given that it was based around the Cascade State and Football game, which was up in the air until about two days before because nobody knew where it was going to be. But nonetheless, we still made it happen and we had a pretty good turnout for that, as well as our giving tree has now been put up and we're working to be in contact with the families that are in need and we're working to get them all the gifts that, you know, that they need. Move on to the next slide. So what we've been working on, so this year we made the collective decision that instead of hosting our traditional canned food drive, we decided to instead try to create new ways to raise direct money and donations for the food bank instead. The reason we made this decision is because in the last two to three years, we've seen a decline in participation for our food, for our canned food drive. This being less cans donated per grade, less cans donated per class. And so after trying different things, we kind of made the decision that it's easier for our student body to donate money than to donate, you know, to go out and to buy actual canned food. And it's also easier for the food bank to take direct money that we give them and they can do more things with that than just cans. So we thought it was overall a better decision to just raise money for them. So the first big fundraiser that we're going to be hosting for them is an after-game dance on December 1st. This is after the first home basketball game. We have already done a fundraiser similar to this and we managed to raise $300. So it's a pretty good start and we have some other ideas in the works as well. We're also currently working on making connections with Star Cinema here in the community to be a part of our Wish Week. So Wish Week is again, in order to support our Make-A-Wish kid, Victoria and her family. So we're going to set up a night with Star Cinema where people can go and watch a movie. We're trying to get it to be Victoria's favorite movie. And part of, you know, part of all the tickets sold will be donated directly to Make-A-Wish. Some other things that we're doing for Wish Week is a Dutch Day, which is up to $1,000 will be donated, the Kickstarter Day, which will also be another $1,000. And we have a couple of other ideas in the works. We've also been searching for prom venues, which obviously is the last big event of the school year and we are going big. So after some big cooperation from our wonderful admin, we are currently in the works for booking Zenith Vineyards, which some of you might know where that is. It's outside of West Salem, which is not too far of a drive, but it's about 30 minutes. But it is a super stunning venue for our prom and I think that our school deserves it and our students deserve it. And so a new event that we have planned as well, which is associated with Make-A-Wish, is something that us ASB and the NHS at our school, National Arts Society, we've been working on for a couple of weeks. We're calling it the Festival of Trees. So it's essentially, first off, you know, a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish, but it's also a way to bring the community together and get local businesses to participate in something that families can see and that students can see. So it's essentially just a tree decorating contest where we will provide the trees. Each business or a school club, support team will be able to decorate it uniquely in their own way. And then those trees will be displayed in our Fieldhouse Gym on December 16th and 17th. It will be open to the public. It will be free of entrance. Catch is that the trees will be voted on with donations. So the winning tree will receive their donations and all the other donations will go directly to Make-A-Wish. We will also have things like hot chocolate, treats, we're going to have, trying to get a Santa for a photo booth for all the kids there, gift basket raffles. And so we got one from the flower shop and loving oven. So we're trying to make it a really good event for the community and for families and most importantly, raise money for Make-A-Wish. And that is it for my portion.
Okay, so I'm kind of doing the sports and other activities at our school right now. So fall sports, they wrapped up a couple of weeks ago. These are all the league ranks right there. So volleyball got third, football fifth, girls soccer got sixth, boys actually won their league, whoop, whoop. And then girls cross-country got second and boys cross-country got third. We're super, super proud of them. They all worked really, really hard and it was a lot of fun to watch them this season. But we're not going to skip a beat and winter sports trials were actually this week. First practices also start, I think tomorrow, actually. So it really, really excited for the season. And then this is really special. These are all the all-league honors. So everyone, or at least one person from all our teams, actually won an all-league honor. There are 36 of them total, which is absolutely amazing. So those are all of them. They're kind of hard to read, actually. But yeah, so that was really, really cool. And then.
Just, just a quick note, sorry Lucas, just want to mention, it is now the fifth year in a row that our soccer team is league champs. So yeah, it was a really big accomplishment for the team and just goes to show how hard they've been working. So I just wanted to shout that out.
And then this is also really big. So tonight is opening night for Clue. So theater's first production is tonight. They will perform tonight and for the next three days in the SHS Auditorium at 7:30 PM. Except on Sunday, it's actually going to be a two o'clock performance. Everyone is welcome. Tickets must be purchased online though at stateandtheater.ludus.com. That's all I got. Stateandtheater.ludus.com.
So yeah, it would be, it would take part during our Wish Week, which so far we have planned to be around in March. We don't have the actual week yet, but it will be around March. Yes.
Have you approached, for example, have you approached the business that I work for, for the Festival of Trees?
What business would that be?
Saniam Hospital and Clinics. I think you might be able to get some people. We'll talk later.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just one other, I don't even know if it's practical, but I was expecting you to say that you were going to sell the trees.
I guess I did forget to mention, but the clubs or businesses participating will have the option to either keep the tree or it can be donated to our families that we're using for Giving Tree.
Oh, cool.
So yeah, we want to, you know, we wanted to make it as a returning event as possible.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Now we're on to superintendent's report. Mr. Loving?
Yes. Thank you. So we'll allow. Steven will put that up for us. So, so the first thing I want to share is our students and our teachers and staff members and administrators are working really hard. Just got done with conferences, really successful conferences, meeting with families and students. And just want to shout out to our teachers and our staff, our support staff, who just do a phenomenal job supporting kids and learning in our schools. Just really appreciate them and I wanted that to be my first highlight tonight in my report. Second piece is our Sopa con el Superintendent en Espanol, which is our soup with the soup in, in Espanol that will take place in December on the fourth at State Elementary. And we're changing the way we're doing food for this particular soup with the soup. And upon recommendation from our friend Suzie Soray, she invited us to do a potluck that night. And so we're sending out information to all of our Spanish-speaking families and inviting them to this event and inviting them to bring a dish. And so, so if any of you decide to come, please bring your own bib and your appetite. Because it should not only be a great discussion, but also some really phenomenal food. So I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. So you're invited. I hope you're able to attend. Next on the list is per a timeline that the board approved last year, the November board meeting of 2023, which is tonight. You had requested me to kind of follow up and return report on the activities that we have for our Every Student Belongs work. So can you make that 150%? There we go. Okay. So if you, you might recognize this timeline. And it began on March 2nd with a joint statement that came out from the district, myself and the high school regarding what the expectations were in, in regards to every student feeling welcome and belonging at the school. And all these joint statements are available to you and they're linked, all these pieces are linked in the, in the timeline. So what I wanted to do tonight is kind of go step by step and share with you how those were completed as a reminder to return report back to you as a board per your request. Okay? So we did a joint statement on March 2nd and, and some of that joint statement is here, but the joint statement is connected. If you, if you click on that joint statement real quick, right there, yep, there's a connection there too. Yeah, I didn't make that available for you, Stephen. All the links aren't available to you, but they're available for the board to review. So just so you know, that's where the, that's where the joint statement is linked. And the next step in the process was by March 16th, that the board would create a resolution and send that out condemning racism in schools. Which you did, you completed at the, at the, at the March 16th board meeting. The next step in the timeline was by April 20th, 2023, that a board policy ACB checklist be developed. And that was completed on the 20th, as was the non-discrimination communication plan. And then I shared that checklist and communication plan with you at that April board meeting. And then at the same time, the, the high school had shared their communication plan to the students specifically at the high school. So all that was done on time by April 20th. By April 30th, the board had outlined that students had been planned and taken, sorry, student lessons would have been planned and taken place specifically in regards to making sure students understood the discrimination complaint process of procedures. And that was done on April 18th of last year, or actually of this year. Also by April 30th, there was anti-racism signage that needed to be installed. And I want you to know that took a little bit longer than we thought, but it was installed and completed in English on August of, of this year. And the, the signs in Spanish are in and being installed this week or next week to a company. And I don't know why we didn't install them. That was, your superintendent wasn't keen enough to order Spanish and English signs at the same time. And so we rectified that. Those are being installed again in the next week or two, right next to the English signs. So it wasn't by April that we had installed them, but it was, we, we had ordered them at that point. So just want to be clear about that. By June, the board had outlined that there needed to be some in-depth training with administrators responding to bias incident specifically. We did that on June 20th at a board meeting, not a board meeting, a super, an administrator meeting that we had in the district that was an all-day training, trained by our legal counsel, Christine Nesbit. So she helped us with that and walked us through that specifically in regards to a policy AC and policy ACB. And then we went forward and adopted a new AR in August that you were a part of as a part of this process. By August 20th, the board outlined that we needed to have student handbooks updated with current board policy, that it reflected that and that we needed to begin the creation of the Equity Advisory Committee. We'd in fact met those pieces that the Equity Advisor Committee has not met yet, but it's in the process of being created. And, and the student handbook was updated to reflect those new and updated board policies for this school year. And then by September 30th, we were supposed to create a district communication structure to communicate bias incidents to students and families. We did that, completed that on December, excuse me, September 12th. And, and we have unfortunately had a few incidents this year that we have communicated out using this plan. And so it's unfortunate that we had the opportunity to do that, but it was good that we communicated out on that. And then the last piece of your timeline was for me to come back and again, return report on all these activities. So you could see at the time which activities we were able to complete or not complete. And there was one of the activities that we completed late and I apologize about that, but to date, all those activities are completed pending the Spanish language signs being installed on our campuses. So I'll, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'll open it up for questions regarding the timeline to the board? Okay. Okay, hearing none. I think it's been a good process for our, our, our board to go through, our, our administrators, our teachers and our students. I think that we are becoming a place more of belonging than we have been in the past. And not that there was things wrong before, but I think we're moving towards people, kids, students specifically, feeling more welcome and more belonging in their schools, in their classes and on our campuses. So I think that's a, I think it's been really good for our district to continue on this road and this process. Thank you. So Stephen, let's move back to the, the PowerPoint if you could for me. Some of us were able to attend, and if you go to November for me. It is click one forward, it's, it's not back, it's, no, it's forward, sorry. There we go. Some of you were able to attend the, the Thai Heart, the Thai Heart Memorial Fitness Center groundbreaking last week. What a phenomenal opportunity that we had to join members of our community, our students and, and the Booster Club in breaking ground on a phenomenal facility dedicated to and named after a pretty amazing state and high school alum, who unfortunately, as we know, is no longer with us. But it was a wonderful event. The Booster Club did a great job. I was really impressed. That was a, it was planned for a, a day that was a half day of school due to conferences. And I was impressed that we had almost 100 students attend that. One, to support the Booster Club, but also to really honor Thai and Thai's family. As you know, Thai's family has decided to be a major sponsor of this facility and, and we're grateful that, that we're able to honor Thai in this process. Again, the Booster Club has taken the lead. We've definitely worked and guided the Booster Club along the way. Darren Schriock, our athletic director, has done an amazing job at partnering with the Booster Club. And the Booster Club has done an amazing job of raising funds and getting the right people in the right places and talking to the right people. And they believe that by next fall, the fitness center will be operational, which is way faster than they initially thought because of the donations that they were able to secure either monetarily or in kind from members of our community. And we know as we sit here, we feel the support of our community, but it's situations like this that just remind you how special our community is. And, and they're not doing it for the adults, they're doing it for the kids. And what an awesome investment for our students. So not only again, as a reminder, will we be using this for students involved in after-school extracurriculars, but this will be used during the school day for all students in the school, no matter what your participation is outside of school, outside of school hours, which is really, really exciting. And, and so anyway, so those of you that were able to attend, I know not, not everybody was able to, but those of you that were able to attend, really appreciate you supporting that and, and being there and it was a fun event. And it was fun to hear Ms. Hart talk from her heart and share with us. It was, it was a special day. So thank you. Wanted to elevate that in our board meeting. And again, thank the Booster Club for their leadership and their, and their, their, their selfless service to us and our kids. And then the last thing I want to talk about is yesterday, the, the November revenue forecast came out from the state of Oregon. And as we've, as we've anticipated, funding declining or staying flat, we've seen over the past year, year and a half, that that's not been the case. Eventually it will be the case, but right now we still are having record tax collections privately, but also the corporate tax collection. It has, has, I think they said, and I don't want to quote for sure because I, I want to review the number, but close to $100 million more again on the corporate tax collection than they anticipated. So that goes directly to schools and, and not this year, obviously, but eventually that comes directly to schools. And so just want to kind of elevate that for a second because it came out yesterday and, and as we go into planning for our budget next year, we know many, many of our fixed costs. And so it will be a little more straightforward as we do our budget for the 24, 25 school year. But we definitely are keeping our eyes open and watching lots of trends that we're seeing. So Ron and I and Danny are really trying to pay close attention to how things are moving and what things look like so that we can make sure that our long-term planning is informed, but also our short-term planning is, is just as informed. So that's my report for this evening. Questions? Yep. No, that's, that's targeted specifically for SIA, I think, and high school success. Yep, yep. And again, the legislature could change that, whatever they want to, but right now that's what it looks like. I mean, that, that's, that's where it's targeted to go. Yeah, great question. Other questions?
Just a comment. I just wanted to share how, I'm going to say magical that groundbreaking was for Thai and kind of a, an oddity. It was, I wore a coat that I hadn't worn for a while and I reached in the pocket and I pulled out one of those armbands. Turned out it was from Thai's memorial on the day that we're going to this groundbreaking. How's that for a? And then in sharing it with Mark, Mark had seen a bald eagle fly over the gym as we're going, right? Was it around the same time? Oh, somebody saw a bald eagle. So it was, it was just kind of, it was, it was very special. And then there are all these other little things that occurred that just kind of underscored just a really special event. And so I wanted to share that. Thanks.
Any other questions for me? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, our next agenda item is the teaching and learning report with Ms. Duncan, who I see is attending virtually this evening, correct?
I am.
And.
I'm relying on internet service from the Airbnb. So I might have to turn my camera off. So we'll see if that works. I am attending a math training in Redmond with as many of our 612 math teachers that were able to make it. We engaged in a learning lab all day today. And tomorrow we're going to work with our consultant at Eagle Crest to learn more about the shifts in the math standards before we pursue trying to find a curriculum that could potentially support our teachers as we move forward for math instruction. So I'm going to rely on Tanya to let me know if you guys have any problems with hearing me. I texted her and I'll turn off my camera if there's a problem. So tonight, my goal is just to report on two items. The first one I've been asked to report on is the At-a-Glance. This used to be called the District Report Card. I submitted my report to you guys to let you know that that has been released by the state. And really this is just to kind of inform our communities and our families and our staff and our students about where we're at on the metrics that are always included on our district At-a-Glance profile for regular attendance, third grade ELA, eighth grade mathematics, ninth grade on track to graduation, and then our four-year and five-year completion rates. What's new this year is they have included, I don't know if you guys got a chance to check out the profiles on the high schools. They're now including college going. So that's really interesting because we haven't seen that before. And then they're making sure to align to the metrics that we are required to report to for integrated guidance to help inform our next steps. You'll see some of the items that I'm super excited about that we're highlighting. I just want to remind you that our At-a-Glance, we have not compared to previous years in three years. So 2019, 20, 21, 22, and 22, I'm sorry, 2021 and 21, 22. We did not do comparison data to previous years. This is our first year in three years that we actually look at our growth or our decrease, where we have some opportunities to grow for three years. So while there are definitely some items that I know that Mr. Loving reported in his superintendent report two months ago, I believe, around our performance data, we definitely have some, some opportunities to grow there. There's also some things to really celebrate about our on-track for graduation, our on-time graduation. And mind, and just so you know, that does include both of our high schools, our comprehensive high school and our alternative ed high school, our district reports to both of those. And so with our all-ed program only being in place since the pandemic, to see an increase in 12%, I believe is pretty impressive at that school. And then of course, the work that State and High School has put forth for increasing their on-time graduation rates as well. So I think it's great to celebrate that we've got a, we're definitely seeing our cohort for our Hispanic and Latino students. Definitely showing a decrease in the gap between graduation rates and our ever-language learners are definitely demonstrating a significant increase in graduating on time. And so we'd like to really hone in on what's working for those cohorts and make sure that we are celebrating that and doing more of that work, which I believe has a lot to do with our community liaisons and their collaborative effort with our families and our, and our students about coming to school and making sure we're addressing the barriers they're experiencing. Something else that I want to make sure that we talk about is just some opportunities for growth with regular attendance. This is definitely, every meeting I have attended in our, our region has talked about attendance being certainly a concern across all districts, all schools. We have a chronic absentee problem and it's hard to teach kids when they don't come to school. And we are seeing that reflected and our teachers have been saying this for a while, that if our kids aren't here, it's hard for us to monitor what they need and it's hard for us to address what, what they need. And so you'll see a focus coming out from the state level, potentially some grants around the Everyday Matters campaigns. And I, I do know that our WESD is collaborating with some national organizations on these chronic absenteeism. And I'm really curious to see how we will partner with them to help really focus in and deal with. This is more than just let's give kids stickers for coming to school. We, we're addressing. We we're addressing some really significant concerns around our state about why kids are not coming to school. So we we need to focus in on that. And certainly continue to provide opportunities for kids to let us know how they're belonging in school and how their educational experiences are so that we can target that for our families. So other than what has been presented, are there any questions about our At a Glance Report Card that you profile that you'd like to ask me at this time?
Yeah, I I just wanted to comment that it was surprising the regular attenders because if you think about it, the standards, it says 90%. So I think you could actually miss one in 10 days and still be like, you know, in the green good. So it's just really alarming that kids are missing more than one in 10 days, you know? So that seems quite a bit. So it's surprising that they aren't showing up. So yeah, it'd be nice to see more work done. So I'm glad that there's some focus on it and potential grant funding coming.
Nicole, may I make a comment on that? So what's interesting about the, thank you. What what's interesting about the regular attender is, once they are deemed not a regular attender, there is no way for them to come back and be a regular attender for the rest of the year. So you can have a kid that misses two weeks of school for a sickness in October, and then they are counted as a not as a non as a not regular attender for the rest of that school year. Because they can't recover from that because that's because it's added up through the year. So once they've reached the point, so you can have a kid that then attends 100% from November to June, and they would still be counted as not a regular attender because of how much they missed in that small period of time at the beginning of the year, which is really an interesting conversation that we've had because we have kids and we, they're not attending, we coach them up, they start attending. And their and their attendance is their growth is off the charts, but they're still irregular attenders for us. So it's it's an interesting thing that we keep talking to the state about, like, we need to reset throughout the year to say, well, in quick K in quarter one, we had this percentage of non attend or irregular attenders. But for quarter two, quarter three, here's where we're at. But once you're, once you're in the group, there's no coming out of the group for the year.
Okay, so that's really good to know because, yeah, because that would be understandable that someone may get sick and then it's just no luck for them to pull out of that for the district. So but yeah, I was starting to think, okay, so one every 10 days, it's even worse than that. Because that's to miss one in 10 days is like, that's missing a lot of school, you fall behind and stuff. So thank you for clarifying that because that, so maybe it's not quite as bad as, but I guess it would be.
It it is quite as bad as you think it is. But the problem is is we can't demonstrate growth for those kids that that become irregular attenders right at the beginning of the year. They're just that that's it. There's no growth for them over time of attendance. We can't pull them out of that group. So we'd really like to go to quarterly is that way we could say, well, for quarter one, we have 51% attendance. For quarter two, we're at 98%, you know, I'm making that number up. But that would be a better metric for us to demonstrate growth versus an achievement or not achievement. So anyway.
Yeah.
Can you refresh us on policies around attendance? Because my my old brain is going back in time to a time when the parents were really upset because they might take their kids away for a vacation during the school year and it was counted as unexcused. So there's a lot of upset about that. I don't know if that's, what is our policy around all that? What is our expectations around the parents and the attendance there?
So we we want to respect and honor families' decisions on what they're doing during the school year, where they're going. But for the state, they don't care why they were gone. All they care about is you weren't here. It doesn't matter if the kid went to a doctor's appointment or a funeral or a vacation. The state doesn't care. They care if you're there or you're not there. So as in a way, as we are respectful to our families about their choices about when their kids come to school. Again, if we have a family that says it's cheaper to go during to vacation in October or in February, right, I can get off work and do the thing. Those are all counted unexcused simply because the state doesn't care if it's excused or unexcused. It's just an absence for the state. Did I say that right, Nicole?
Yes. Yes, you did.
And that goes through on transcripts and things like that. So is that is that an issue at all moving on?
Transcripts do not count attendance. Of course, attendance is likely reflected in classes and grades that are on the transcript. Because a lack of learning will help a kid not achieve as much in a class as they normally would. But but discipline and attendance are not part of transcripts as as data. It's only high school classes and grades that are on there.
Probably I've I've heard of different parents that they go to work and then their kids are supposed to get on the bus. But if the kid missed the bus, they're just kind of out of luck. And, you know, sometimes training the kid to be on time and to do that can be a challenge. And so sometimes it's like not even that they're sick, it's just honestly, they don't have an alternate way to get to school. So that adds some challenges if parents aren't available to drive them in.
Well, and and to that order, and not to belabor the conversation, but we've sent very mixed messages to families. Because for the last two years, we've said, if you got a sniffle, keep your kid home, right? If they have a, if they have any symptoms, keep them home. And now we're saying, send them to school. Keep them off, they got a fever on list list of things, but we want them here. So so families have gotten some mixed messages and families at this point are saying, I'm hearing there are kids sick in my kids' class, I'm not going to send them because I don't want them to get sick. And so there's it's a, it's a very interesting combination of ingredients about trying to trying to disaggregate the variables that we're dealing with and how do we get kids to school more? It's a complicated, complex recipe.
So Ms. Duncan, I have a question for clarification. You'd said that over the last two years, we didn't measure the decrease over previous year. But is it accurate that this At a Glance is the previous year? It's not from four years ago that we're comparing? Okay.
No, the data that I or the reports that I've seen this as a comparison to last year.
Okay. And then so my question for you is, any surprises in this from your perspective?
I don't think that I'm surprised. I think that we have been, so part of like my reporting for SIA and high school success is that we look at the data and we put it in front of teachers and in front of our collaborative steering committee. So we've known for about 12, 16 months that attendance has definitely been a concern. So I think that what I was super excited about was the math scores, I'm not going to lie. And honestly, Maryland's increased by 6%. That's a celebration. So where those math scores came from, I would say if I was going to say a highlight on a surprise, it would have been that. So that was definitely very exciting and I I just want to celebrate that the teachers' efforts in that. I know that they've been really concentrated. And I know that's a really small population, so that could have been one or two kids, but that's one or two kids that showed a lot of growth this year. And I'm I'm super excited about that.
Excellent. And my last question would be, your counterparts in neighboring districts, are they observing the same things generally?
Yeah, it's, yes, actually, you know, it's interesting. I pulled some some other district data and I let Mr. Loving know that I anticipated some questions around that. I don't see a consistent pattern, other than most districts are near or below state average on metrics. So I I feel like if I were to compare us to our neighboring schools, they might be doing better in say, one metric, like ninth grade on track. But maybe on regular attendance, they're having the same experience as us that we're seeing across across the state. I believe that absenteeism is actually a national concern. And we're not just looking at a state concern when it comes to that, when I'm talking in our regional meetings at the ESD level and at the state level. So we're comparable. There are some places where districts around us are doing better and places where they're not doing as well as us. So.
Thank you. Anything else for your report tonight?
Yeah, so I am, I'm also going to report on our end of the year annual SIA report. I've included that in the written report that is required by the state that I report that to you. I can provide that in any way. I just did a synopsis of the four questions that I'm asked to respond to with narratives. I did bulleted just kind of synopsis for you guys versus giving a dense narrative that will be posted to the website on the 30th of November. So it's just an opportunity for us to show you how in the last year we've spent and if we've met the requirements for the SIA. That's our student investment account. This is particularly driven towards rounded education, health and safety. And tech. This year, I put in here about we have 1.6 million. We fully spent that amount. I definitely want to just talk about how Rhonda has been just instrumental in making sure that when I report this quarterly, giving me the data that I need to make sure that we're reporting fiscally responsibly to the state. But a lot of things that we've done in the past two years, we've maintained and sustained. So we haven't added a lot of new items to our SIA and what we've spent. But, okay, Tanya's asked me to turn off the video, so. So we were able to do almost every single activity in our SIA report, what we had planned for in our SIA, except for our GLAD sigh up training. Just because we have a lot of teachers that wanted to spend their summers at home. They were not uberly excited about a summer professional learning. So that funding, we were able to roll into technology and we we moved that to that source so we could purchase more Chromebooks to replace ones that we had before. So other than what I put in the report, is there anything that you guys would like me to highlight? Or do you have any questions about?
I'm interested to know if you're happy with the outcome from the spend.
I am. I I believe that something that we do well as a district is that we really look at what the needs are from our needs assessments. We get reports back from all of our staff in all classifications. I do this twice a year through our collaborative steering committee to make sure that that we're making sure to intertwine, that we're not adding new initiatives and putting more work on top of what our teachers are doing in the classroom. I think that our commitment to curriculum and updating our curriculum, which is what you'll see is a large portion of our expenditure, was our ELA curriculum purchase that the board approved last year. We're hearing great things happening in our classrooms. The ease in the use of that curriculum in our classrooms, our continued commitment to AVID and measuring our teachers' ability in their classrooms to be successful around teaching strategies. So and really, we made sure that we also had substitute coverage in this funding. That was probably our biggest increase this year was to make sure that teachers were able to actually have professional learning during their actual workday. That is, while sub shortages are definitely an issue, asking teachers to come back and work after school weekends or over summer can be a challenge, especially during this time where we're experiencing, you know, a commitment to their wellness and their wellbeing. And so substitute coverage was probably our, my biggest celebration was making sure we wrote it into the report this year. And Rhonda did a really great job helping me reopen and add more money to our sub coverage this year. So yes, I'm, I think we're moving forward with this in the next biennium. Most of these activities will continue and be sustained. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Duncan, and thanks for a long hour on Thursday night for having me on both sides.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, you guys.
All right, our next item is our business and fiscal services report, Ms. Allen.
All righty. Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I am here to give you the monthly financial report through the end of October. So in your packet, you'll see your, the financial report there for the general fund. Also included is the food service fund and the grants and also the appropriations. So we're still looking at a really healthy ending fund balance projected at 5.9 million. There will be some adjustments coming through with the the audit report. Just before I came in here, I received our draft financial report, so super excited about that. That has to be to the state by December 31st, so we're very much on target to have that have that turned into the state on time. So, yep, let's see. We have received our first round of November property tax payments. So I was just curious on how those were looking this year compared to last year. I did budget 3% increase in property tax, but right now, just in what we received so far, it's looking like about a 4% increase. So that tells me that the collection rate is a little stronger than what we anticipated and what the counties anticipated. So I'm pleased to see that. I'll I'll keep you updated on that to see how it goes through November, December. And then it trickles in a bit in January and then it really levels off after that. Another piece of information on our revenue is that the thing that kind of surprised me the most is that our interest on investments has really increased. So we have our money sitting in the local government investment pool and it is actually earning 4.9% interest, which is just incredible to me. So just a year and a half ago, it was like 0.05 or something like that. So that revenue is already past projections. If it stays at the 4.9%, we'll probably see more increase in revenue right there. So that's a good thing for us and I will make sure that I keep most of our money in that local government investment pool and not move it over to our checking account very quickly, so it earns all that interest for us. That is about all I have on the financial report. I have a couple of other things to say about the revenue forecast. But any questions on the actual report that I submitted to you? Hey, all right. So I did just want to read a couple of things from the revenue forecast that I found were very interesting as I was looking through it. So legislators, again, received positive financial news as the December economic and revenue forecast released today showed another surge in revenue that is projected to generate an additional 343.5 million in net general fund and lottery resources for the 2325 biennium. So that is good news. Most interesting, and not even a quarter of the way through the current two year budget cycle, and Lee alluded to this, there is already a 418.3 million corporate kicker tax projected at the end of the 2325 biennium. Those funds will be required to be spent on K12 education during the next budget cycle. So to me, as I'm looking forward, where I know we're in the 2324 year, but my thoughts often go into 2425 and 2526. Though that's good news for us because those funds are actually going to be used in the next biennial budget cycle. So good news there. And then they said it's worth repeating that Oregon is in a very strong position to weather even a significant economic downturn. So we'll see if that holds true, that that that, we could be skeptical, we could, we could hold on to that. Yeah, I know, right? I shouldn't have said it. So and and just to let you know, we we are starting our our 2425 budget process. We'll be looking, we're starting to work into that process in December and looking at all of our ADM and and what we're projecting that to be. I do have to turn in my estimate of membership and revenue next month for what I suspect will be our local, our local revenue and our membership, meaning enrollment in the district for the next, next year. That's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions regarding finances or the business office or the report that was submitted.
That's the general statement. I appreciate the fiscal responsibility for the years, the neighboring school districts that are really struggling. And we're not losing territory, but we're very stable territory.
Yeah, we are in very good shape right now. And you're right, there's a lot going on around the state. So it's good that we can hold our ground right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our next item is our talented and gifted annual report, Ms. Durst.
As Principal Durst is coming up to activate her microphone, I want you to know that I'm so grateful to have Principal Durst in our district. This is her first year of 20-year deal that she's made with me. So appreciate that. And and just so you know, in in all of the COVID craziness, there's been a few areas that I wouldn't say have been neglected, but definitely haven't been on the front burner. And so Sophie has come in and taken a program that has been, that has been skeletal and has really been working hard to kind of sunrise a more robust tag program for our district. So I just want a quick shout out to Sophia for really working hard on this as she also is the functional administrator and leader of one of our schools. So thank you, Sophia, and then I'll, you know, be quiet.
I appreciate that. Well, I am excited to be here tonight, one, just to hear from you saying such nice words. But also to share a little bit about our tag program, like Superintendent Loving said, it has been something, is this on? Okay, that it has been a bit of a skeletal process. And on November 1st, our tag report was due to ODE. So prior to that, I did a lot of work kind of researching what our current district tag process looked like, what we had in place, what was being used at every school in our district. Every school in our district does have a designated tag liaison or tag coordinator. But the process at each school looked a little different. The identification process maybe not so much different, but the steps and documentation that they were using varied school by school. So part of our tag plan, and I don't know that my PowerPoint, you have it in your board report. We had to submit our policy, our process, how we identify students and then our plan for improvement. And so that was submitted and it's posted to the district website under the tag. Student under student services under the tag department. You don't have to pull it up. We're good. Something just to note, our district, as you guys know, serves about 2,100 students. Of those students, we serve 20 kids are identified as tag, talented and gifted. ODE really states that a healthy identification would be about 5 to 10% of your population. Obviously, at 20, we're well below that. That could be a multitude of reasons, right? But I think part of it, it was just lack of awareness of the process. Lack of training a little bit on district coordinators and principals knowing kind of what the process looks like. And so that's the part that we're trying to shore up this year and over the coming year. I'll be working with building principals, building tag liaisons to really fine tune and simplify the process. And then do that annually so that they can then pass that on to their staff. So that not only, a lot of our identification comes from parents. Parents typically are the ones that will nominate their child to be screened for tag. Not often does it come from staff, but I think that's just something that we need to to help our staff be more aware of that there's a process out there for that. In the board report in my PowerPoint, you'll see kind of a simplified tag process. So this is really the goal. What we're looking at is a place where our building principals and or tag coordinators at the building level can go to and it's in one place. And it kind of, it guides you through if this is a parent nomination, this is step one. And through each step of the process to the very end of where a student would be identified or not identified. And then you would create your instructional support plan from there, should they be identified. Something we also need to get better at. And it's a learning process is making sure that when we have students identified as tag, we're providing that instructional support plan to all of their teachers every year. And sometimes those things we get stored in cumulative folders, right? But making that process known that as a tag coordinator at a building, we're pulling that out each year, sharing it with a new teacher. As you guys know, students can be identified in three areas intellectually gifted academically and reading and or academically in math. Our district does not have a a evaluation or assessment that we use annually. Some districts really look at a certain assessment and they use that annually. Though the state is moving a bit away from that, they're looking at more localized norms and national norms. And so we collect as a team, tag team at a building, we would collect a body of evidence. And a student could then qualify if they're in the 97th percentile or above in a nationally nationally normed IQ assessment. And then if you'll see on here, or they can also score in the 97th percentile on a standardized assessment. But then in addition to that, the tag team still needs to ensure that there's a preponderance of evidence to support that they would be identified as tag. Just another thing to know, if we have a student identified in tag as tag in our district, the instructional support plan would be developed and that student would be served within the general education classroom. So there would be acceleration, enrichment, extension opportunities for students. And fortunately, because we have some strong systems in in our district like Avid and Burke and really supporting teachers through some strong teaching strategies. We're able to easily extend and accelerate some students learning who are identified as tech. Last piece is just to note in your report, these are the building tag coordinators. These are the folks I'm going to be working with over the course of this year, in addition to the principals to get them trained and kind of revamp our tag process. And I look forward to finding time to do that with them and learning more myself as the district tag coordinator. So any questions for me?
First, I just want to say how very, 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 very much I appreciate your efforts here. Because I think this has been an area of long interest and hope that we could, you know, do a little better. And I know I've heard for a long time from parents, you know, wanting us to to do this better as well. So for all those thoughts and wishes over the years, yay. Now, on the other side, though, there's that part of me that wants to ensure every student is challenged. And so I'm really happy about this. What if they tested the 96th percentile or? I mean, and it's, you don't have to answer, but it's just kind of a thought or a concern or something I want to voice because I, I think we want to challenge every student to meet them where they are and move them where they need to be. So you don't need to feel the, to answer.
No, I mean, I, I, I appreciate that question. It's actually something I've been thinking about. I was having this discussion with my sister who works in another school district in Oregon and she's a speech language pathologist. But we were talking about that since even the time that I've been in school to now, the teachers training around differentiation of instruction. Like it's happening day in and day out where where students are being met where they're at and and speaking. When we talk about tag kids or kids scoring in that 96th percentile, teachers are still doing that, even if they're not identified. They're still making sure that their needs are met, whether that's acceleration, individual learning opportunities. And I think, like I said earlier, some of the systems we have in place, right, for like our Burke system, where we really challenge teachers to differentiate instruction. We talk a lot about that with our educators and and as principals doing observations, like things we're seeing happening and we're seeing those things happen pretty regularly. Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, being a student, I'm a senior in high school and my seventh and eighth grade year in middle school, I was both years I was identified as a tax student. But unfortunately, my eighth grade year was cut off due to COVID. And so I think after that, I really after that, I'd never heard anything about tag and never spoke with the you know, I guess the the director. And so I think it's really great that you're bringing this back because I know when I was a kid in in middle school, I thought it was, first of all, that was really cool, you know, to to have that achievement, but it also gave me a sense of wanting to continue to do better. And I think that given the fact that it never really came back to me in high school, I I'm still doing good, but I think carrying that through high school for students that are in middle school now will help them greatly.
Yeah, I know that's, I appreciate that. If you look at the detailed report that was submitted to ODE, you'll see some specific courses that the high school offers for students, which would be an offering for tax students as well. But I think you're right, making sure that if a student's identified tag at a younger age, that the high school level administration and teachers are aware and share those plans. And that's just something that I think part of the process had kind of fallen flat. And so that's why we're picking that back up. Thank you.
All right. I have a question, but I, but I want to ask a question of clarification first. Earlier on, you'd said that currently we identify students for talented and gifted based on reading, math, or general general performance.
It's intellectual, so it looks at their IQ.
Gotcha. So I'm interested in like your mid to longer range vision. Because that that means that we're not really looking at them in terms of visual performance arts, leadership abilities and the creative thinking, things of that nature. So down the road, what do you envision your program becoming? And how will we move to the point where our teachers are proactively identifying the kids rather than relying on parents to really kind of advocate for them that way?
Yeah, I think a big part of that is one, the documentation. So that process that I was saying we're kind of fine tuning. Part of that, that if there's a form in here called the preponderance of evidence form. And that actually looks at a lot more than just those assessments or just those IQ tests. It asks kind of characteristics of a student, different things you're seeing of a student. That's filled out by teachers and parents alike. But I think there's still a lot of room to grow in what we want this program to look like. And I look forward really to being able to work with some of our administrators and tag coordinators to fine tune that. All right. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is 202223 exit interview summary, Ms. Blackwell.
Thank you. So I just wanted to review, there is a PowerPoint. I don't know if they need it. They have it in there. So looking at last year, we go, just remind you, we go from have to think about this. We go from September all the way to August. We don't follow the school year, the academic year. So those that left us in August from California, so maybe I said it wrong. July through June, they might have gone backwards. So we go July through June. So those that left us. No, I said it right. Those that leave us in August were counted in last, this this data. Those that leave us in September will be our next data. Okay, so now that we got that clear, because that was clear as mud. We had 14 certified leave this last year, 17 classified, and then four, which were administrative director or non-represented, which gave us 35 total that left the district. I did interview all but eight of those 35. Some left where there was not time or they didn't want to come see me. So that's part of it. But we'll tell you, like doing the exit interviews, one of the things that I think we might want to talk about in the future, it might be wise to have an outside party do those interviews because I think we might get more honest data. I do share with them when I sit with them and tell them, I know it seems weird that the the HR director is interviewing you and you're leaving. You might not feel like it could be a safe place, but I I assure them that I'm the only one that the notes I take, I'm the only one that sees that. If they identify anybody, I make sure when I report it to you, it can't be identified, they can't be identified. Because that's the only way we're going to get better if I know where the issues are. And for the most part, I got some pretty honest, but I wonder if we had somebody who wasn't invested in the district, if it would change. So the top reasons for leaving, those 35 that left that I got, retirement was big list last year. That was the one, we had a lot retire, both our classified and certified. The next, that was the the next highest reason was closer to home. We did have those that left the area. And then we did have three that just want a different setting or position. And some of those left education altogether. So that was, sorry, for our certified. For our classified, the reason for leaving, retirement again. So we had eight retirees just from our classified and our certified together. The other reasons why classified leave that was top was better pay. They wanted to be more time with their family or closer to their family, different position or setting, and then left the area. So our longevity stats out of those 35 that left, 19 of them were in their zero to four years. So it was again, that's the highest number that left. They're only here for a few years and then they're out the door. And we did have several just that only had one year. I was surprised how many were just one year out of that 19. Five to nine was three, 10 to 14 years, two, 15 and 19 years, six, 20 to 24 years, two. And then we had three that were in that 2529, which makes sense if retirement was the the highest reason for leaving. It makes sense why that we had that many at that, at that top. So when I, you know, took all this data, we had 95% felt that North Saniam gave them an opportunity to use their skills and abilities. 96% stated they received feedback for their performance. Out of that 96%, 83 believed that that feedback was useful. 95% felt they could bring concerns or issues to their supervisor. Out of that 95, 85% believed the supervisor actually listened. 90% felt the work was appreciated. So those are all still good, even though they're leaving us. There's still some good data there. So then I did, because I think last year you guys kind of asked for this, you wanted kind of a look back. So I kept, you know, the five years worth of data again. And so you can see that we're still not quite back where we were prior to the pandemic, but it's going in in a better direction for sure. Last year, as you know, the numbers were really, really high. We had 54 leave our district last year. So two years ago, sorry. Last year was the 35. You're you're correct. Thank you, Mr. Lovey. This is why I don't teach math right there. We know that. So 35, which was three years ago, then, if I'm doing my math correctly, we had 35 as well. So we're going in the right direction. And as you know, this is part of our goal. We want to keep more. 35 is still too high for me. So when I look back for the top reasons leaving and we we look at why, you know, are are they staying the same? Are they changing? Retirement is coming back, you know, so that's we've definitely got a population that has been here a while and it's, they're ending their careers. And so that again was there. But as you can see, closer to home is still one that's there. So the travel. And a lot when they said that they wanted to be closer to home, a lot of it was inflation and the gas at that time. Like I heard that a lot in my exit interview, like I can't afford, I would love to stay here, but I just can't afford it. And that was a lot of times from our classified, right? Because because of gas prices and because of inflation. And so, I mean, a lot of it, like I said, stayed the same, but the retirement piece. And then when you look at our, comparing our our positive trends, a lot of it stayed the same. They do believe we have good working conditions. I mean, I asked a question in there where how do you feel about your physical space? How do you feel about your materials? How do you feel about your collegial relationships? And every single time, like they they feel very supported there. So that's pretty cool. They do believe staff are great. Classified love that they're included in the PD. And we heard a lot last year after the classified PD day that if we could take some of their required trainings off that day. So if they didn't have to go to medical training, didn't have to do per seater CPR, and they could do more of the PD, they'd be very appreciative of that. So this year we have done that. We've switched it to the half day where the kids left right before, we're doing medical training. We're making sure we're taking care of them. So they have PD day for them. I heard over and over again, the best PD, they love a lot of the avid training that they've done. Almost always, the very first question when I say, you know, what do you love most about your job? They instantly say the students. Students are great. And this year I heard over and over again, I just love when the kids get it. There's this light bulb, this connection, and I know it. And that's just very, you know, keeps me going. And then I heard autonomy. They like having, you know, that they, they know they have these standards, they know they have these to meet, but they have their own autonomy to put, to to deliver it the way they want to deliver it. Suggested for improvements, provide stronger communication, keep up with the curricular needs. Again, this is for the five years. Make sure new staff have a go-to person. So one of the things they said, they love the new teacher program. But they're like, where's the classified? Where's that same kind of support, which is one of the big things? We were so excited last year when we got the classified, what we classified, what we thought, the substitute classified grant, we were so excited because we were gonna change that and we were going to start to train classified to start doing, you know, teaching their peers as well and do things like trauma informed. Here, we have all the program all ready to go. And then we found out it was a reimbursement grant, not a planning grant. So we didn't get an extra day with them at the beginning of the year, but it's one of the things that we're going to try to plan in the budget. But they said that it would be really great in the building if they had a go to person. So if they had, and they know they've got the mentor and they've got instructional coaches, but they would love a go to person in the building. And I do believe that's one of the things the license, you know, has mentors. So we're working with them, just kind of looking, what does that wraparound support look like? Need counselors for our younger students, heard that. More support for behaviors. This was big for this year. That's the thing I heard over and over again. We have big behaviors and there's not always support. And then pay. I heard that over and over again. If we could get more pay, it would be awesome. Any questions?
I'll be sure.
So in the at a glance, we saw, you know, by building retention for teachers. So how does our retention compare to others in the state, like the the industry norm, if you will? And is there any concern about the profession in general having the the incoming staff? Or, you know, classic certified? Like, is there any concern with that?
Yes, there is. So like, that's one of the very first things, I think, at one of our principals' meetings. I noticed that we don't even have the student teachers we've had in the past. So we're down, I mean, not that we get a ton, but you know, we're down, I think, three this year than we had. So that's a little nerve wracking. So kind of reaching out and we have less less students, all of ours, like talking to Western, talking to OSU. Enrollment is down in in these areas. So just trying to get us back, back getting the profession. So absolutely, that's that's a concern. And it depends on where you're looking. Some of the Exodus is greater than here and then some is lower. I will tell you, we're in a different time in education, because I know like when I started that contract, when I signed it, I knew I wasn't going anywhere until I couldn't even start looking, right, until spring. And then then I could decide and then my notice was given and we're we're having people like recruit, I mean, and when I say people, a lot of times it's the ESD, right? We're we're losing people in the middle of the year and that's just not that wasn't the norm for us even last year. So already this year, we have this our third certified leaving in the middle of the year. And then an admin that left. So that's that's high, like what is happening? And it's again, the recruiting and more money. And so that's difficult. It's difficult to deal with. But I believe that if we find supports that we need to for behavior, because that's that's a deterrent for some, right? I also know, you know, if I go, if I get a math degree and I go into private industry, I'm going to make a couple hundred thousand a year. I do education. I'm not going to make a couple hundred thousand a year. So that's, I mean, that it's hard, right? Like, I I used to do, used to talk on career day all the time and people would ask me. Because when I went, I had to have a master's degree. It wasn't an option to have a bachelor's. And my very first year teaching with a master's degree was twenty three thousand. And they're like, why do you do it? Well, the benefits were phenomenal, right? I had Cadillac insurance. So I said, it's awesome. I'm with my kids. The time that they're home, I have, you know, summers off. I mean, you've got to look at that twenty three is really only ten months of work. Not true. You still work in the summer, but you know, and so that I don't, we can't say, and my retirement, I don't know that we can say that anymore. They they don't have the support. I mean, I have high deductible, have to have an HSA, right? If not, there's, you know, another thousand coming out of my check after what the district already pays. So it's it's hard in our profession, but I do believe, like, I think there's hope when we talk about that. Because just even looking at the governor saying, this is a priority. I've got to put more money towards it. And and we do. We we need more money. And that's that's a true statement. You ask me the hard question, Mike?
Oh, I have a question. Go ahead, Mike. So I I think if we were reading an article today, it's quite likely that the big districts will probably be laying some people off because of financial issues. And so I'm assuming when we, if we start shoving a bunch of people into the market, it's going to change. You know, I mean, some of the places they might come are here, you would know. And yet we, for a number of years, we've we've known that hiring people that are in the community increases your chances of staying, or at least, I mean, I think your your data here reflects that still. And I believe we've known that for a number of years that that's always been a reason. There was, I've been on the board, why people leave is because they, you know, they are driving or closer to home or
Absolutely.
So how do you, how are we going to balance out the, if we, if all of these potential employees are dumped on the on the job market in education? How do you balance out the? You know, you're trying to get the best, the best employee you can. We'd like that employee to stay. The best employee that only stays a year isn't quite as good as somebody that sticks with us that maybe was almost as good.
I agree.
How do you, you have a plan of how you balance all it out or?
I hopefully with, so last year, I think one of my very first tasks was I created a hiring guide. And I think that has helped. I think if we have a good process and that process is in depth, I know not everybody likes that, but like if you even look at what we did just to hire Sophia, right? That wasn't just a one step and it's done. There were many steps and many people involved in it. I think that's what we need to do. We need to just keep, keep like looking, what is our process? To that, so we do get the cream of the crop. I think something else that would be wonderful if we have time and it works out, right? Seeing them in their environment and teach because that tells you a lot. Like if you can go watch them, because sometimes on paper, right, they look good and they know what to say when you interview, and then you see them with kids and you're like, that's not the same person. So seeing them with kids, just seeing how the kids interact with them, I think is huge. So I think that's that's a thing we should be implementing too. But just making sure we have the structure and the process behind and support the admin and hopefully the cream will rise to the top is ultimately the goal.
We just had to fill a shop position and we've learned the same thing that if we can hire local people, our chances of developing and keeping them is much higher than if you've got someone coming in that has to make a long commute. It just doesn't go to, I mean, they're spending three hours a day driving. That that's tough.
Yep, absolutely.
Both from a monetary and a time perspective.
Well, and I think too, I think the prices of things. So, you know, the new apartments we have, the prices for their rent is much lower than Salem. So if we can, I mean, it it would be ideal if we had all this money, if we couldn't even like purchase two or three homes, or maybe the homes that the construction does that becomes ours. And those become a rental for those that we have coming in that are new teachers. We now have a place for you plus plus work. I mean, thinking like that type of thing, those are the things that go through my head all the time, because that would be phenomenal. Because last year when we hired, we had some that were clear from Maine. And they, we interviewed them, right? We did it virtual, hired them. And then they couldn't find a place to stay. And then they're like, I can't with the salary that I've accepted, I can't, you know, afford the rent that is happening in Salem or whatever. So like finding them. So having those options and making sure that we have those relationships. So I called property management companies. I'm like, I'm asking people, do you have any rental? What is it? What does this look like? But it'd be pretty cool if we had a couple rentals that could be a place that could be for some of our new teachers. Because now now we're providing you a home too, a little bit. I mean, they would pay rent, but you know, that would go back to the district, but it's you know, decent amount. But so kind of going with what you're saying, get them close here. And then there's nothing more beautiful than here. I'm sorry, I did it again the other day, drove from Salem. I'm coming back, I'm on twenty two. And the gorgeous view that's in front of you, that is Lions, right? That gorgeous view, I'm like, how do we not? How do you not live here? I don't know. So but I agree, we got to something close. But definitely, I think our process has to be just fine tuned and make sure everybody, everybody knows that. So like, one of the big things in the hiring guide, you know, they sit down prior to even interviewing with the committee, what are our top priorities? What do we need in a candidate? And then those projects down. And now what questions will will show what this means? And so now we've got a rubric that we're doing. And so there's, it's it's definitely more robust. And I think that helps personally. Maybe, maybe not, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we did pretty good, just saying.
One more question. So I don't think you're asking about it, but I have a sense from national discussions that the environment, maybe our school environment with the staff support feels pretty, pretty good. But there's students and parents and the rest of the fabric of, you know, that educational effort. And I have the sense that that's not always as as positive and hard for teachers. Do you have a sense, even though maybe you didn't ask, you have a sense of how they, the folks that left, how they were feeling about that?
A lot of them stated behavior. Behavior was really, really hard. As I told you, there's several that are leaving education. We had a brand new teacher that we hired last year. That part of it was her support system. So she was living here with her family. Her family moved over the mountain. And so they're in central Oregon. And so she was here alone and she struggled with behaviors and classroom management. And so the, you know, her her admin team did a great job wrapping around her, trying to help her, trying to support her, give her supports. But in the end, she says, I think I'm leaving education. I I'm going to go over, I'm going to be with my family and I'm going to do something else. It's just emotionally too much. It was just too much to deal with. And so I think some of that's there, but they also love the kids, because I heard that over and over again, too. What's the best part? Working with the students. A lot of, a lot of those were, of course, are the top that were retiring, why they were leaving, but the students were the best part of their job. So I think we've got that mixture. It's hard when you have big behaviors from little people. Ones that you don't think you should be getting behaviors from. And that's just difficult. Like, it's difficult to do. And then having more and more limitations on how you can deal with that is also very difficult. Being told you got to let them run and nothing inside you says I should let them run, like nothing. That's just not instinctive. The mama needs like no way, no how, you're not running, right? And not that I'm trying to tackle them or anything, but I also don't want them to get injured. And so I think that that's hard too, right? And so just making sure we have that support around that as well is huge.
So you you lead me to believe that it's essentially a seller's market, that for now, the candidates are in such low numbers that they'll be in high demand. And you'd mentioned that the, you know, the governor could focus on education. But my question is, do you foresee that the governor is focusing on teacher education for spending dollars on in order to help boost the supply?
I do know, like, a- as you say that, I know a portion of the money is going to the Department of Education and TSBC discussing how we could maybe do internships. So make it more like what a doctor would have to do, right? And make that paid instead of it just being you go to school and you do this and then you do your student teaching per year where you're paying. I remember saying that all the time. I'm paying for you guys to treat me like this. Stop treating me like that. Where we would actually, they would actually get money. And I know there's a portion of the money that's going that direction, discussing that. What does that look like? And I think that would be phenomenal support for for anybody thinking of going into teaching. We just heard from OSU, they got it back again where I can't think of the name of it, of course, now that I'm sitting here, but where they can actually do school while we employ them. So they can do school, we're employing them, and then they just have to do so many hours and we have to support them. So that puts them kind of like an internship, right? Now we can have them. So, you know, they're they're in with a teacher, that teacher's teaching Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but they then, the teacher's still in there with them Tuesday, Thursday. They're teaching. And so there's that support and they're still getting paid.
You you had mentioned one first year teacher that you lost. How many, how many did you lose teachers first year?
I, you know what? I should have put it in there. I put it in the the same numbers that were there, but out of those, it was high. It was a high number, because I was like, most of these are one year. That was surprising to me as I was doing it. I was like, yeah, so I have nineteen out of the nineteen, I probably would say eleven. I mean, it was that high, but I'll get you for sure the data. I can, I've got all that still. So I'll give you that for sure. I almost thought about putting it like those first few years, one, two, three, instead of the zero to four. Because it's just that nineteen, but I was, I was pretty surprised how many first year are are gone. But I remember also too, again, and we're talking clear back in, I don't want to say how long ago, but a long time ago. They told me, if you make it past year three, you'll stay in education. If you don't, you won't. And that was clear back then.
And are are you making any inroads with our allies at Willamette ESD to not poach?
I wish. I wish. They are, they are going to help us with some services we need. So I'm gonna, I'm going to keep that for now. Going to keep that for now.
Thank you. Okay, our next items are licensed and classified union reports, but I see neither here tonight. Is that accurate? Gotcha. All right. Well, I hope they're having a good time not having to report anything. All right. And then hopping head, our next is our state and city council liaison report. Councilman Patty is here along with Mayor Quigley.
Thank you. First off, yeah, my name is David Paddy, State and City Council President. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak for you. Prior to this meeting, I had reached out to Board Member Strong and he had informed me that perhaps maybe some question and answers regarding our new camping ordinance were in order. And then he also was able to give me a list of some prepared questions that Board Member Wagner had presented to him. And so I did a little research and spoke with staff and was able to get some staff responses on these. I feel like that's that's super helpful, rather than, you know, maybe political rhetoric of one of five, right? And so I I wanted to go ahead and present that to you first. There there is some information here that I'm going to go ahead and share with you. But again, I just want to call out that I am one of five. I don't speak for the entire council. I speak for myself on that. And I'll do my best to just call that out for you all, okay? So first off, Board Member Wagner had asked if the ordinance is working. Kind of a general question, of course, and I I appreciate that. How do you define working, right? That's the first question I was kind of thinking in my head. But the response we have from staff is, I think it is. And so I think I would agree with staff. I think it is as well. But ultimately, when I define working, I say, is this improving our community? Or are public safety's ability to tackle this challenge? And I would say, yeah. Yeah, I think it is definitely helping that. Which leads me to your next question. Is it an effective tool for the police? Great question. So Chief didn't have too much to add, but City Manager said she believes it's been an effective tool. They, I don't know if you remember this from my last time speaking on the ordinance modifications we did, but previously, due to some state legislative changes, they were not able to move them along out of parks and other public spaces that they now have the ability to do so. Because we have designated an area where camping is not necessarily prohibited between a timeframe hours, right? And we spoke about that last time. Has there been much activity? This is a really good question. And I actually asked this as we went through this process. There's been none. Since the first time I've came and presented to you after we passed this code revision back in August. No, nobody is using these spaces. You know, I could speculate on that, but I I think that potentially there are better locations for them to go. And that is, that is the reason. And in my conversations with folks from this community, you know, a lot of times that they're here because a family member is here. They're here because their student attends your school. And that's what grounds them in this community. And so they're trying to find the best location. I don't think that some of the locations that we have are most desirable for them. So is there much activity? None. And and that's probably why, it would be my guess. In a perfect world, what would you change? I don't know if Julia thought about this one, but she said I can put my two cents in here. So in a perfect world, I guess, you know, I I would have funding to go ahead and elevate these folks out of poverty in some kind of stable setting to give them services and things like that. I I don't see that as enabling somebody to continue to use substances and things like that. I see that as giving them a handout to get them out of those horrible situations. So again, that is just my, that's my two cents. I would like more funding to tackle this problem. Unfortunately, and I'm not, I'm not going to bemoan this too much. Our funding request in the state legislator through a state legislature through the Oregon Mayors Association went unanswered. Very unfortunate. But you know, when the funding is there, maybe there's other solutions available. But at this time, what we have done is designate uh, what we have done is designated an area on Wilco Road for these folks. At this point, I want to just open it up to any questions the rest of the board has because that's pretty much an answer to what I would change. Yes, Board Member Wagner.
The um, the, the park and ride at the swamp, is that one of the approved areas?
Ooh, the park and ride at the swamp. Yes, we hear about the park and ride at the swamp a lot. Um, no, it is not one of the approved areas. Thank you for asking. Great question. Uh, anything else?
I have a question because you, you triggered a thought there. You'd mentioned that um, someone who may have been camping in a place they no longer can camp, might have students in our schools. Or is that correct earlier? You'd mentioned that.
Oh, I was just saying that a student may be grounding that person who is homeless in our community, through this community.
Right. So I, so I, so it's a wondering, not necessarily so much a question for you, but a wondering whether we have any way of knowing whether any of our students are impacted uh, by these changes in particular, um, because I know that we know of several of our students who are either, you know, homeless, houseless, or otherwise, you know, have housing insecurity. So it makes me wonder whether that's impacted them in some way. Probably something we can't obviously know, but I wonder.
I do too, uh, Board Member Kreber. I think that's a really good question. You know, I don't know how exactly we would survey that data, but I would be highly interested in that information as well to further tackle this problem and support those folks and, and get them out of the poverty or whatever situation they're in that's holding them back from accessing stable housing.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Board Member Whitaker.
So I'm, I'm not sure where the city limit line is. Is it at the river? Or because I, I'm wondering about, I see a lot of the homeless and what looks like maybe car camping or something like that along the, you know, kind of both sides of the river and under the bridge. Is that, where's that fit in all this?
So I think what you're referring to is the bridge as you go out of town towards style.
Yes.
Do I have that right? Okay, good. Uh, so yeah, the river, that, that does demarcate the city boundary in certain parts, but I know that uh, in the past, and Mayor can probably talk about this too, we've seen homeless encampments down there by the river. Um, our city staff has done an amazing job helping those folks move along from there and, you know, get their belongings safe and if they needed to. Um, but the problem is Lynn County borders us, right? Okay, so that's a different jurisdiction that's going to be handling these and tackling these problems. And I'm really glad you brought up car camping because this is something specifically, you know, our council has talked about a lot. And what we can do to modify our code to kind of tackle some of the challenges and the nuisances that we hear about at a council level for this. And basically what I'm gonna tell you right now, again, is one of five opinion. It's really difficult uh, as far as um, um, dealing with folks who are in their vehicles camping. Because like, you know, you park in front of your house, do you think it's right for uh, police to come contact you after your vehicle's been there for seventy-two hours? You know, i- it's kind of the same with a homeless person who's in our community and just staying there. Uh, we kind of have to treat it the same way as we would treat your vehicle staying out there. Uh, so that's kind of the challenge that I've heard from Chief of Police. But yeah, car camping is definitely something that we've kind of spoken about. I don't know that there's any amendments in progress or, or being considered uh, for that code specifically, but it's definitely something we've been talking about. Yep. Any other questions I can answer? Yes, Board Member Oliver.
Just a clarifying question. So, so there is a distinction between car camping and not, not car camping, I?
You know, I'll go ahead and say that I don't believe it's defined in our code separately that way is what you're saying. Um, a- as far as camping in, in general, I, it's not defined as, as in a vehicle, if that makes sense.
Okay, okay, interesting.
From a, I mean, I deal with that professionally some. And as long as the car is running, things go pretty well for those folks. It's when the car breaks down, everything goes sideways for them. Yeah. As long as they can continue to move around, they can stay out of trouble and out of everybody's view and things aren't too bad, but uh, unfortunately, at some point in time, the car doesn't run any longer. They don't have any money and then things go sideways pretty fast for them. So it's a, it's unfortunate and kind of sad.
But I'd be happy to come back if you have any further questions about this, or if I haven't answered anything sufficiently, I'd be happy to go back to staff and get you more detailed answers for you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Y'all, good evening.
Our next item is public comment. Uh, Ms. Whistman, did anyone uh, register for public comment or qualify for public comment tonight? All right, I'm gonna take the advice of a friend of mine and not read the entire thing about public comment and just move along. All right, so our next item is our consent agenda. Uh, items of the, that are routine nature placed on the consent agenda when no uh, debate is anticipated. Any item placed on the consent agenda can be removed at the request of any board member before we take a vote. The uh, the remaining items on the consent agenda are then disposed of in a single motion. Um, tonight, uh, the two items which are on, or excuse me, the items which are on the consent agenda include approval of meeting minutes from uh, nine, six, twenty-three and ten, nineteen, twenty-three, uh, the approval of new hires and uh, those are the uh, the only two items on the consent agenda. Anybody want to remove any of them for discussion? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I can.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, our next item are is policy updates and second readings. These policy edits were presented for first reading last month, so this uh, this evening they are presented for a second reading and possible adoption. Um, I will go ahead and uh, and take the uh, policies that were assigned to Board Member Strong. And the first one then is mine. It is policy two A, which is our instructional resources, instructional materials. Um, policy. Uh, in summary, uh, this policy was reopened in order to uh, continue to to continue to identify and uh, and protect all protected classes from federal law. Um, and uh, we looked it over last time. Uh, been no changes since last time. Uh, so I'm entertaining a motion to approve, and if you'd like to discuss, once we have a motion, we can. Probably should clarify that there was a change made so that it would not be a list of the protected classes and uh, the word bias was removed. So uh, to draw your attention to the line, recommended instructional and supplementary materials as well as library media resources will be inclusive and value diversity in all forms when possible. Be free of discrimination against all protected classes and contain appropriate readability and so on, is the uh, alternative language to try to rectify the, the concerns from last month. Anybody interested in moving for approval?
All moves that we approve uh, new policy, that's two A or IIA?
Oh, it is.
IIA?
I was thinking sort of, you know, Italian Roman for a while, so IIA, my bad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving two, excuse me, IIA as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, policy passes. All right, the next is item JGAB. Those don't look like Roman numerals at all. This one is marks.
Yeah, in this one we reviewed last month. Um, there's just a minor grammatical and uh, a more detailed naming of the training program. The changes uh, were numerous, but you know, really just refining the policy in, in the light of the current requirements, not really changing a lot as far as the spirit of the policy. So, so I recall there weren't uh, wasn't a lot of discussion last month, so.
Can I entertain a motion? And you can do so if you want.
Can we wait for the motion before I ask the question? Okay, so I'll make sure.
I move we re- approve policy JGAB um, as submitted for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to comment, I'm, I'm worried about this still. Um, and I think we have to have it, right? Um, we're required to have it. Um, there's new laws that require us to have it. Um, I just look at it and I'm, I'm trying to put my, it's not that, I see you looking at me kind of worried. I'm not, I'm not thinking we should do anything to harm a student. Let me just be clear about that. There should be guidance about um, how we care for the students, absolutely. Um, I'm just worried about how tangled we make it for teachers and staff to navigate in the classroom. And I think this doesn't seem to make it easier, clearer to me, even though it's been handed to us. Um, so I, I just, I understand this is what we have to do. Um, I'm also worried. I know we're doing what we need to do around training and things like that. But if you're not using it every day, I'm thinking like, how am I gonna remember what I can do and what I can't? I'm gonna feel like I can't do anything. And I'm just worried about the environment that um, it leaves us for our staff. So I just wanted to put that thought out there. I'm not against, you know, having rules and policies around it.
I have concerns.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my, I have similar concerns. I, I guess I'm, my question to Mr. Loving would be that uh, is this, is this as good as we can do to protect our people and, and make it clear for them? Is there, I mean, does anybody at the district level have any concerns about what we're trying to do here? Or is this the best thing that we can put forward at this time? If that's, if professionals that I'm depending upon to make that decision can say yes, I guess, I'm not wild about it, but we vote for it. You know, it's kind of my thinking, but I, if there's something we're missing, for goodness sakes, this is the time that we should be dealing with is right now before we pass the thing, so.
So in answer to uh, Director Wagner's question, um, to be really intentional about what you asked is we have grave concerns about the expectation around seclusion restraint as well. Um, this board policy allows us to be in compliance with current law, which we are advocating to change. So um, we are gonna be advocating at the short session with the legislature, not just us, but all hundred ninety-seven school districts saying, we want to keep kids safe. Yes, there shouldn't be child abuse happening in the classrooms, but we need more help and we need more, um, we, we need more tools um, to help us with this. I was, uh, I had a superintendent's meeting as I do before every board meeting. It just happens to fall at that time. And we got the opportunity as, as twenty-one superintendents in the region to speak directly with the new um, ODE director, um, Dr. Williams. And she said, what's going well? We talked about some things. Uh, what do you need help with? This was a number one issue for us. Um, was uh, supporting teachers and students and families of uh, receiving um, services through special ed. Um, specifically the, the increase in behaviors that we're seeing and what this new law does and does not do for our students, for our families and for our staff. And so um, it's as good as we can get right now, Director Wagner, I believe, under current law. It, it, we have a huge amount of liability if we don't do this, if we don't pass this board policy. Um, but we are actively um, strongly advocating for changes of the law. Then we come, we'd be happy to come back and say, we'd like a new board policy please based upon this new law. So that's, that's my candid uh, sharing.
One of the things you learn after you've been on the board a long time is sometimes you have to do things that don't feel as good as other things do. This might be in that category. I hope that if we can do anything to, I, I would certainly, if I could do anything as a board member to help the changes along, let me know. So.
Thank you.
I think that uh, teachers and staff as they attempt to comply with this law is important and we're doing that tonight. And I think that it is our fiduciary responsibility to pass this tonight as well.
Any other comments or discussion? Right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion to pass this policy?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Right, policy passes. Our next uh, our next one is policy KL, public complaints. And uh, to summarize from uh, from our first go around, this is an effort to reduce the uh, the length of the previous policy and to essentially move uh, much of the policy which is operational in nature into uh, the appropriate non-policy location. Um, as I recall, uh, we didn't really have any difficulty with it last month. Uh, it clarifies timelines more closely aligns with the legal, legal requirements in our current practices. Uh, it is more clear and it is quite short compared. So um, it would be my recommendation that we, that we now make it our policy.
Moves that we uh, adopt policy KL as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Our last policy for the evening is LBEA. We had good discussion on this policy uh, at our last session and um, this policy was opened predominantly to come into compliance with a revision of ORS that now requires reporting our number twice a year. And uh, no changes have been made to the policy since, or to the proposed policy since our first reading. Um, I, I do think that many of our members have very, very good, uh, very heartfelt, very uh, conscientious reasons for uh, some heartburn about the fact that the policy must exist. Um, uh, and at the same time, um, I, I don't think there is the will to change it at present. Um, and so it's my recommendation that we pass it as it is printed.
I move that we approve uh, policy LBEA.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion tonight?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, Superintendent Loving, if you know, um, I just found out that uh, is it uh, open enrollment? It's proposed for, for next November. But if open enrollment is, is enacted again, does this go away or does this count as a like a different district or is that separate?
First of all, I hadn't heard that yet. Um, and so if that were to happen, open enrollment used to be, if it's the same as it was previously, directly related to inter-district transfers.
Okay.
So um, it, this to, to register with a virtual public charter school, this did not come into play with open enrollment. Open enrollment was directly to say if the kid wanted to go to a neighboring school district, that that's the part that they would be able to do it in district to district. Um, which currently still exists uh, in, in a form in which um, most districts will say, if a student wants to come to your school district, we're gonna let them go.
Yeah.
Right? Before, there was some heartburn over that and people were really not letting families go. So that, that law came into place and that has sunsetted. I haven't heard that that's the sunrise and obviously that's new information for me, but that, to my that has sunsetted. I haven't heard that that's the sunrise and obviously that's new information for me, but that, to my knowledge, didn't have anything to do with enrollment in virtual charter schools, separate processes.
This is not a neighboring district. This is a remote district.
It's a virtual district. Yep.
Virtual district, okay, yeah. Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Other discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And you've got the vote reflected. Good. All right. Thank you all. Hey, we moved through a section that oftentimes bogs us down fairly easily tonight. And now I should knock on some wood. Okay. All right, our next item are the OSBA elections. I'd like to start by saying thank you to Ms. Wisman for including as much of the information as you were able to include so that we could, so we could make a more informed decision. We have the opportunity to vote for four positions in the Marion region and for two resolutions. The information was in our prep packet and we have options on each of these to to vote in favor of a candidate to abstain or to not vote. As I understand, or excuse me, that's what I meant when I said abstain. And on the motions, we could vote yes or no or abstain. Would the, would the board prefer a short period to discuss the, the, the general idea? Or would the board prefer to progress to addressing each possible vacancy first?
I'd be, I'd be, I think going forward, motion by motion would be fine.
Yeah. All right, cool. All right, so so the first, the first is for OSBA Board of Directors, position eleven, which has two two nominees, Ashley Carson Cottingham from the Salem Kaiser School District and Jeffrey Crapper from Willamette E S D. I'd entertain a motion in one of three possible ways, for either of the candidates or to abstain.
I would move that we are we, let's see, what are we doing? Then no, I mean.
Cast a, cast a yes vote for one of the candidates or abstain.
Cast a vote for Ashley Carson Cottingham.
I second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would only add that I have personally acquainted with her. I work with her husband a lot. And so I think she's a, she's a sound candidate for us.
Yeah, the thing that I liked about it is she seemed like she talked about unity and like wanting to bridge gaps of like, you know, in a political climate coming together. And so I just really appreciated that desire for unity.
And I have worked with her on the regional board. That was the, the member I could not recall her name earlier, but that's her, so, yeah. She definitely has a heart.
Yeah, I have personal experience with Mr. Crapper as well, and I think that his work in C T E is admirable. But I have no qualms about voting for Ms. Carson Cottingham as well. Any other discussion? All right, so the motion is to cast a yes vote for Ashley Carson Cottingham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. We will cast that vote. The next is for OSBA Board of Directors, position twelve. Alonso Oliveros is running unopposed. I'd entertain a motion for either a yes vote or an abstention.
I would move that we cast a yes vote for Alonso Oliveros and for position twelve.
All right, that's been moved.
Yep.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, Mr. Oliveros? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will cast a yes vote for Alonso Oliveros for position twelve. All right. Our next is for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position eleven. Maria Hinojós Pressey is running unopposed. You entertain a motion?
I would move that we cast a yes vote for Maria.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We will cast a yes vote for Maria Hinojós Pressey for position eleven. Now we're to OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position twelve, features two candidates, Osvaldo Avila from Salem Kaiser and Merle Stutzman from North Marion. Entertain a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will cast a yes vote for Osvaldo Avila. All right, now there are two resolutions. Resolution one creates the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus and designates a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and L P C.
I moved that the board supports. So SBA Resolution one is stated above.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just that I, I do think that sometimes rural communities have unique things that happen and voices. And so having a position to have that voice is going to be really beneficial, I think, to the state as whole.
Yeah, I agree. I went to the Oregon Small Schools Association breakfast and yeah, I did not know, Lee was just stating a hundred ninety seven districts. I knew it was over a hundred. I couldn't remember how far, but a majority of Oregon school districts have one thousand students or less. So that puts us well above the majority, which I, I was not aware of. So yeah, similar to the Color Caucus, this, you know, gives them a permanent seat on the Board of Directors. So definitely in favor.
I just want Mark to share that. Didn't share before.
Okay. Other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of voting yes on resolution one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will vote yes on resolution one. Resolution two adopts the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws presented in the, the supporting documents. Is there a motion?
This is the resolution that was cleaned up, right? It cleaned up a bunch of stuff that they needed to just be seclusion.
Yes, please.
So, so, yeah, it's only on the, it's only on the board book. Got it. So whereas the following only reflects a high level overview of the proposed changes, all changes are reflected in the proposed bylaws. And I think there are ten bullets. I'll just go bullet by bullet. Bullet, clarification of membership voting process for both resolutions and bylaw amendments. Bullet, clarification of an exception to the term limits for OSBA directors serving as immediate past president. Bullet, clarification of the definition of a quorum for OSBA Board of Directors. Bullet, combination, oh, sorry, combining the finance and budget committees and outline terms of the members. And outline the terms of members. Bullet, adding a rural school boards caucus representative to the Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee. Bullet, adding language to reflect the school board members of color caucus representation on the L P C or Legislative Board, Legislative Policy Committee, which was inadvertently omitted during the two thousand eighteen amendment. Bullet, adding information regarding the PACE Board of Trustees under the Committees and Caucus section of the bylaws. Next bullet, adding language stating caucuses must comply with OSBA policies, guidelines, and adding language to establish the rural caucus. And the final bullet edits to grammar, punctuation and language for readability.
I move this board approved the supporting of the OSBA Resolution number two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
When we went, the meeting that Mark and I went to, I don't remember what it was, it was in Salem, but they talked about, there was a bunch of this cleanup work that just needed to be done to bring things into alignment with the way they read.
Fair. Other thoughts or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of resolution two?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so we will vote yes on supporting resolution two. Thank you. All right, our next item is strategic planning update. Ms. Whipper? Excellent.
She's my partner in crime. And we are off to a great start. We have a mast notebooks with lots of information because there's a lot of things that have, that were required to do and provide and monitor. And certainly we can't ignore those as part of our planning process. A lot of it is surveys as well. We had a great discussion with Nicole. We had many discussion with Tanya, but not probably the full mail deal yet. She just helped us with some of the documentation. We have interviewed Lisa initially, Lee and Mark. And so our next order of business is we would like Aaron and Coral and Mike to not leave before you pull your calendars out and we book time with you. And students are coming. So, so you know, students are coming. We'll work with you later. But no plans to do that right away. But that's the next order of business is the first wave of, of board interviews. And then we want to get the admin interview scheduled, I hope in December for the holiday breaks. And so that's anything to add?
Don't forget.
Nope. Any comments being our first victim, Mark?
It was almost penis.
Well, and when we time it right, Tanya might feed you, right? Thank you, Tanya. If anybody, any questions at all, just don't leave without coming with your calendars. But any other questions?
How long does the process take?
The interview?
Yeah.
Oh, for you, we might plan on three hours?
No, that assumes the shock hurts a little bit and it gets better.
No, we'll, we'll do, we'll do, you can, you know, handle, but we, we allowed an hour and a half for, for Mark. But I think it was like an hour early, right? Not that we are done with you yet. Yeah, yeah, that's why I said not that we're done with you yet.
I really appreciate that you guys are putting that time in. I know you have your own busy schedules. So the fact that you've already jumped on it and done that much so far is really impressive. So thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. Our next is board reflections and announcements, kind of hybrid together there. The board can collectively reflect on statements made during tonight's meeting or other topics covered during the meeting or share reports on other things you've done that are relevant to other, other things. So please feel free to do so.
I'll jump in. What the annual OSBA conference I've got, I actually did pare it down quite a bit. Still got a lot of notes. I'll go quick. If there's any questions interrupt and be glad to elaborate, but there's certainly a lot of struggles around the state. We're all aware of the Portland strike, Salem Kaiser layoffs. They have extensive labor issues. They brought in a mediator. Central Oregon is, is kind of behind them, but still struggling. Failed bonds almost everywhere except for Saint Paul. And the Jervis District is really struggling and may even be absorbed. So we really are in a, a very good spot. I appreciate that. The twenty-three, twenty-five Bynum funding of ten point two billion was a record. However, they were pointing out adjusted for inflation per student, this is still a decrease. So, you know, as we, you know, the, the term I think you and Ron have used is maintaining, you know, current service levels. Yeah, there is no, no extra in there. Piper Sandler complimented our financial staff regarding professionalism with the last bond refinance. And they also noted that you picked a great time and that is definitely true. OSBA is pledging to get the board stipend fixed in the next short legislative session. As part of their push for equity, so that was a top priority for them. November of twenty-four, I don't know if this is official or just rumorings, but apparently there's a fair amount of support for both a school choice and open enrollment on the ballot, November twenty-four ballot. These are posed by many educators, but promotes economic equity. So OSBA did not announce that we're going to take a stand on that.
So I'm sorry, was that, is that referendum or is that later stated?
You know, I don't know. I don't know. That's a good question. I assume referendum, but I, that was not stated. So that's a good question. Colt Gill was honored for years of service. Sorry, so Jim gave him an out on COVID. But he, he did say that, that he wanted to clarify that O D E, O D E advocated for kids, but in the end, the decision wasn't always ours. And I, I did kind of gather that towards the end and I thought that was a, a good clarification. Colt also did commend the school boards, quote, where we saw politics set aside for our students. So he stepped down in June from O D E after, I don't remember, but a long time, so. Of interest is Citizen Portal A I is in, currently in beta. Its goal is for the entire United States, every school board, city, county commissioners, state, national meeting that is posted on video that their A I engine initially it'll be for cities fifty thousand and greater. So I don't know when we will be on there, but their goal is at some point. So our entire meetings, the A I will generate a complete transcript, word for word. And it's searchable. And if you click on a result, it will start playing the video from the meeting at that point. So if we wanted to look up, you know, bond, you know, Pers Bond refinance or something, you could say, oh, it was, you know, May of twenty-two and June of twenty-three and, you know, so very powerful tool. Everything has two sides and that also means you can probably search for in the last year, how many times did Mark say? And if it comes up with a hundred and thirty-two, that'll be a little alarming, but anyway, that's out there. One fight. I'm glad somebody's keeping track. So one of the keynote speakers was Dr. Adolf Brown. He did an equity and education. He was very inspirational but pointed. So I wanted to give a few of his little one-liners. His subtitle was Education Inspire or Retire? Now that's very succinct. Another one I loved, if serving is beneath you, then leading is above you. Start by seeing yourself. We're all broken. How many have parented perfect kids? Remember that. Remember that when cases come before you, be speaking to boards. Don't ask what's wrong with them. Ask what baggage they are carrying that I know nothing about. And I thought that was very powerful. Went to a breakout session on school safety. They're stressing common entry points with controlled access, which you've made great progress on. Don't overlook weak links. They were talking about the importance of HVAC maintenance and I was not following that. And they're like, hey, in, in this late summer, early or late spring, early summer, it heats up. And they're like, hey, in in this late summer, early or late spring, early summer, it heats up. Teachers are propping open doors. Well, all your security measures just went out the window, so. Um, yeah, they're also talking about UV filtration for, you know, unseen, you know, COVID, et cetera. Um, the ability to keep awareness alive as far as a culture with many drills. You know, schoolwide is one thing, which an administrator can also go into a classroom and declare at that moment, there's a intruder lockdown. And that minimizes the impact to the whole school and yet keeps that culture alive. Um, emphasize the psychological security for staff um with knowledge and training. Basically, if you can get yourself and your students behind a locked door, survival in a a intruder situation um dramatically increases. Along with that, half-inch windows with uh inter- inside or center laminate um, are an incredible security for outside classrooms. Um, I did not know this, ESDs can provide threat assessment for threatening individuals. Strong mitigation tool in that they coordinate with local police. Um, also suggested mutual aid agreements for counseling service during a mass casualty event. Also, they are saying again, AI um has come dramatic. And you can buy a system, and I'm I'm sure it's not cheap, but that will continually monitor your video feeds twenty-four seven. And it will, you know, do everything from identify a trespasser to, you know, disregarding a rabbit hopping across the football field to even evaluating behaviors of, you know, okay, there's a group of guys next to the bathroom. You know, this looks suspicious or something. So that's something I knew nothing about, but could definitely see some some value there. Um, ballots and bonds as we move on. Um, I needed a refresher. I was close, but not quite. So bond is fixed dollar amount, tax rate can vary, levy is fixed tax rate in the variable uh dollars um that they produce um or the that they yield uh varies. Also, bonds are only for capital. Um, and as you're approaching bonds, make sure and highlight state federal private matching funds as well as any investment you've done as a school district um to start saving that case. And they're talking about community foundation or PAC um as an advocate typically coming out of the strategic planning process. So then there again, we're we're starting that road. Um, and that's about it. Uh, one last note was, uh, remember the smartest person in the room is the room. That was, that was good, but yes.
All right, thank you.
So I did a little online research.
Yeah.
Apparently there's a a ballot referendum, uh, there's a movement going for twenty-twenty-four. There's two of them. There's open enrollment amendment and a school choice amendment. So all of those things are being promoted uh by some several groups from what I can tell here.
Okay.
Um, so the open enrollment allows you to uh go anywhere, I guess. Um, and the school choice allows you to take your seventy-six hundred dollars and go where you'd like with it, so.
Yeah, I think OSBA is opposed to it in the past, but this new push for equity is kind of put them in an odd position, so. And there, at at least at the convention, they were not coming out with a strong position on that, so.
I have a hard time with the whole stipend thing. I I just uh uh, school boards are already political enough, and that allows it to become more of a springboard for people to launch their political careers. Cause you know, they get to make a little money while they're doing it. I just, I'm, I'm a theorist, I'm against it.
Can you clarify when they said they were gonna fix it? They were gonna make it so that it wasn't illegal?
Right. That little little detail. Um, their their goal is, and it seemed like they were fairly optimistic that they would get that done during the upcoming short session, which I think is February through March or April.
Basically a thirty day.
Okay. Okay. So their 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 point is um that it removes barriers um from everything, you know, from yard signs to filing fees. Um, but even, you know, some districts are larger and, you know, the gas can be a barrier to some. Then they're also saying, you know, um, it allows you, you know, one one guy was saying, you know, uh I I could use that to to bring donuts into this, the teacher's lounge when I visit my school. You know, so. Yeah, I if when we when in or if we get there, I would certainly advocate for on the 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 low end of that, but I uh I see their point as well, so.
So what happened with Jervis, cause they're not too far off from size with our district, was it just they're didn't handle their financials very well, or what happened there?
Um, Lee, you might be able to speak with more authority. I I think they are somewhat smaller than us. Um, my understanding is that they just from brief comments is that they've kind of made some poor financial decisions over the years. Haven't recovered, have not built up a an ending fund balance. And I believe uh it was either a bond or a levy, but I I believe they went out for an operational levy um just to stay afloat, and that failed miserably. So they're talking about potentially dividing the district, half go to Salem Kaiser and half to Woodburn or something, something like that, so. Yeah, it's there's, there's a lot of turmoil and you've seen the OSBA emails as well with with Jim stepping down and uh, you know, the contentious board meeting and yeah, so a lot going on.
As I said, Jervis is a town that doesn't have a much of a town to it. That's part of it, I think, is that it 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 doesn't have a real commercial core. And um, and and they've struggled for a long time.
Okay.
Other thoughts today?
I I have a probably of them. Um, some of it is in tandem with what Mark has shared, but not obviously from the OSBA conference, but um, for my part, but a few of us did meet with Representative Deal. That got really loud. Um, a few weeks ago now, I guess. Um, and I would from that conversation, I would encourage all of us with the seclusion restraint issue in front of us that we we do use our voice and contact our representative, our senator. Um, that that was one issue that we we did discuss with him briefly. Um, and we we did talk about the he brought it up, the open enrollment or Better Edu- Better Public Education Act. He happens to be the chief sponsor is my is my understanding. Um, and what the internet says, so it must be true. Um, but it but it was a very good um conversation that that we had. Um. I think that was all I wanted to say there. Um, visited State and Elementary School. Seems like everything was two weeks ago, but um grandparents lunch, of course, I was wearing a little bit of a different hat, but I always liked being able to wear a couple of hats. Um. So much fun to see the staff interact with with the kids and the families, and they they did a fabulous job. Um, and then I think the PTA or PTC, whichever letters it is, um, was helping facilitate that, but lots, lots of families in the school, so it was great to see, um, great to see that. And then just one of my observations from tonight. Um, and and I don't know that it's factual or not, but in looking at our at-a-glances, uh the retention rate for our staff struck me as fairly high. Um, whether that's true for this industry specifically, but kind of across the board and what I'm seeing in the HR world. Um, and you know, what I read and stuff, that seems to be a pretty high retention rate for um staff, so I think that says that says a lot about our our district, even though we know people are leaving. Um, so, you know, mother is room for opportunity there. Um, I think that's another positive that that we have 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 for us.
Others?
I guess I just want to reflect on a struggle that I'm having, and that is um I've been reading a uh some history. I like history. I read a lot of books like that, and there was definitely some content that gave me more pause around the choice issue. Um, because there's some history around what has has happened decades before um and how it really undermined um, the educational opportunity for the whole. And and so and and I I can't, and you know, brief you on that. I can tell you the book. I'll find a chapter if you want to read it. But um so I'm left with how do we, cause the whole right of choice, you know, the individual right issue that is touches so many things. I always think of it of it in the context of individual right versus how that choice affects others. Like, um, you have a right to drink, and if you choose to violate the law and drive, you know, that could affect somebody else. Uh, or a lot of somebody else's, and so it's that that same issue here is how does one family's choice affect the whole? And so I'm just quite honestly struggling with it. Because while I don't want to say, no, you must keep your kids here. Um, I don't want the district to be in the business of we've got to sell how we do our business to keep our students here, so we give them, you know, the best education possible, because the resources, if they take the dollars with them, the resources are definitely going to be impacted. And it's going to limit our ability, and and so this is what happened in so many of these other cases. It's just a spiral that is is very difficult to get out of. How do you ever get to where, hey, we're great again? And so in the old days, of course, it was fine, you know, like you want to move, go, it's okay, you can go, but the dollars stay here. You know, if you if you have the resource to take them to a private school or whatever, I mean, maybe the district stuff is a little bit different, but but um, so anyway, I just wanted to reflect on my struggle. I have not gone gotten to drawn a conclusion yet. But my overarching worry is that tension between respecting a family's choice and how a collective impact might affect the rest of our students, which I care very, very, very much about. No easy answer. I just wanted to point out the wrinkle.
Other thoughts or? All right, now it's my turn, so. Alicia, can you clarify, uh, Ed Deal, this is the chief sponsor of the of the Better Public Education Act, which is essentially the open enrollment portion of this discussion? Or is that the give vouchers of money to people?
So the Better Public Education Act, I looked it up just to make sure I wasn't confusing it. Um, low-income education savings account. I won't read the whole thing there. Open enrollment, raise the cap, which is the charter school three percent cap to six percent.
Gotcha. Okay, um, the the reflection that I wanted to make tonight actually was it was related to what Ms. Blackwell was uh discussing, because I think having a having a unionized workforce has its positives and negatives, and one is that you can't necessarily respond to quick market changes. And I know that our classified staff as a whole, uh, we're competing with lots of other kinds of markets for those for for those people. And so there is a a bit of a uh, I I would expect that they would be more fluid, more more mobile. It's nice to to a degree, although we might be competing with other districts for teachers, they're in a single industry unless they choose to exit it entirely. So I I I I worry more about if high numbers of first-year teachers are leaving us, then is it us or are they leaving teaching, right? Um, and so I I think that'll be something for us to watch over time. Um, and and I think that spending the the time and effort as she describes to support and nurture and retain, you know, the care and feeding of early uh your early teachers is is gonna pay off debit dividends for us. The, I I if I took, I I can't help myself, so I'll wade in on school choice. Everybody has a choice right now. If if they didn't have a choice right now, there wouldn't be a proliferation of private school options. People can choose to go to private school now. So I also am generally in favor of making sure that those who uh who are in our uh in our care are getting the best education that we can give them, so that's all I'd say there. Uh, anybody else?
Um, I was just really impressed when I went to Grand, was it the grandparents' day or Veterans Day? Yeah, okay. Uh, but anyway, I I was impressed. Yeah, uh, I was just impressed with how good our food is at the, I just, it was much, much better than I remembered when I was in school. And uh, I I just thought it was, oh, they had a really nice salad bar at Mary Lynn, and I just thought it's, it was it's good that um the kids are getting some, I mean, it's not slop on a plate. It's really good stuff. It tasted good. I I was impressed, and uh, I don't remember it always being that way, so.
Thirty seconds, I promise. So my cheeseburger was really great at grandparents' day, too, but in addition to that, I would compliment our food server service, because I happen to be hearing some students from other other districts. Um, that were talking about their food and it basically being described as plastic that gets heated up in the microwave. Um, that has not been my experience when I've eaten in our um in our cafeterias, so um, again, my cheeseburger was really good.
Okay, uh, anybody volunteer to be board greeter next month? Same general day and time and right here. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I share something really quick?
Sure.
Um, I just, cause it's for the for the students, um, excuse me, during the meeting, um, after, apparently they were both the mayor and Mr. Patty were so impressed with you guys, they um are asking if you would be willing to come to the city council meetings. Um, not every month, um, maybe once a quarter, or maybe you guys can maybe work that out with them, but they would love to have um, some student recaps and 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 just um, I have just extended that invitation to you, so let me know how, and maybe maybe a board member might want to go too. I don't know, just moral support and whatnot, so.
Uh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's awesome, you know, um, I think if we just figure out dates and the meetings are and yeah, what what we should be doing, yeah, that's that sounds great to me.
I'll get you hooked up with Mr. Patty.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, sure.
It just would be nice to have you guys there.
I don't know, W U C is coaching certified in South Council.
Right, no, yeah, no, 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 you guys, you cannot serve, uh, you're you're stuck with us for the rest of the year.
So that, yeah, actually snowball, no, I got one for you. So snowballs, because I think so, to then reflect on the the uh Festival of Trees or or whatever you're calling it. I think that's a great opportunity to engage people in this community who uh lo- really like to do that stuff. I mean, I I've got a sister-in-law who spends months planning and preparing how she's gonna make a tree in her town for the Festival of Trees, and you know, connecting that to the to the high school and to the uh, you know, to the needy causes that you're doing. I think that's wonderful. So um, so yes, please do reach out to lots of community, uh, you know, opportunities there and um and persevere on that one. If it's not as good as you want it to be this year, keep going and that will be something.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, I, we have an ongoing list of just growing of businesses and clubs in our school that are are wanting to participate and that we want to get to participate.
Okay.
And as well as um the original concept when we sat down, like when I sat down with the president of NHS. The first time we ever talked was we want, like, our first goal was, let's create an event that's gonna outlast us, and so I want this to you know, um, to happen again next year and then the year after that and and new things as well.
Awesome.
On that same note, I would recommend, if you haven't already, to make sure you share it with the Chamber of Commerce, because I would imagine they would share it out with the business members.
Absolutely, thank you.
Benny, I can connect with you too. I'm, we're, so we've just launched this community update newsletter. And which I guess you kids probably don't know about, um, but so far we've already, I, we just shared it out just this week, I think, and we've already had over five hundred people read it, which is cool, but so I'm building some, I'm collecting some community um connections, and so I can help you with that as well.
Yeah, if you could just send me that information and then I I can get you that. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Sure.
I'm talkative tonight, I guess. Um, just just to clarify, in case anybody else lives off their calendar like I do. I think I heard us say same day and time next month, but it looks like it's actually the second Thursday next month of December fourteen versus the third Thursday, right?
That's cause I was just riffing. I didn't actually look to the next page, so my mistake.
As far as the unless you all want to come back in the third week during Christmas break, we can, we can. Um, so I know we can't have a forum. Um, so I know we can't have a forum at the soup with the soup, but I, I'm going to try and make it to the December fourth one. Um, I'll do my best to get there on time, but coming from work at Salem, I might be a few minutes late, but I'd like to be a part of that.
That, wonderful. And, and to clarify, as long as we're not talking about board business, all the board members can attend. You know, please don't sit all in a row and then be passing notes back and forth, but um, but all board members can attend as long as y'all, like Pinky swear that we're not going to talk board business. We'd love to have you all there.
Thank you.
Cool. And, and, and also if you're coming, thank you for bringing something tasty. Got it. All right, our next, uh, our next item is our informational only items. And so we've got the field trip report uh in the packet, student enrollment at twenty-one hundred. Note that the uh Options Academy is now uh more differentiated for our reading pleasure. We have our future agenda items, annual calendar. Um, if anyone would like to request that we place an additional item, now is an opportunity. As is every other day of the month when we are not meeting. Just to be clear. A list of upcoming board events and activities, uh, December fourth, Soup with the Soup, December fourteenth board meeting, and I will have to check my calendar to move it, I'm pretty sure. Um, and then uh twelve, two, twenty-three, which Special Education Day is going to fall on a Saturday. Because it's always the second, is that how come? So will we observe it in a different day for the, for the staff and students?
Not really something that we have traditionally, so I've just been trying to add those in for you guys, if it was something that you did want to try to um, reach out to that particular group or whatever. Um, I think any, anything around that day would be greatly appreciated.
Wonderful. Okay, we have some time to, we have some time to think about that. And then uh, unless there's anything more for the good of the order, the next item is to adjourn us. All right, here we go.